Too long, seems like I always talk too much. You know, in the future, what we, what we probably figure.
Baby's owner.
I don't need, I, I volunteered it, I don't need more comments. The peanut Gary there, okay?
I'm getting older with the minutes.
Yeah, I can deal, okay. So, so at this time, we'll go into our budget session, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baldwin, and thank for the board members of those here. All the figures we'll be talking about will be up on the screen display of the front. So, Dr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, you should have a pack, a copy of this in your packet. And we'll just go through each line item. We've got historical information in front of you, sixteen seventeen draft budget, seventeen eighteen draft budget, and unfortunately, this year's budget. The first section, PRC 001, Angie, if you want to explain the information that's around the board regarding teachers' salaries.
Okay, that's just, what I did was take the current teachers that are on local right now and add what is the proposed salary for next year, and went ahead and bumped those up to that grade and staff, and added the benefits. We don't necessarily have a set amount on an increase at this point in time, particularly for non-certified. There is, on the A schedule, on the bachelor's degree schedule, there is a listing that they have suggested we go by, so that was accurate in doing this part of the budget. But, we, I went ahead and bumped those up. The retirement rate is increasing to eighteen point four four percent, which is a one point three one percent increase from the current year. Hospitalizations increasing about two hundred and thirty-five dollars per person, so I went ahead and built that in. So, you see, we, right now, we've got twenty point six seven teachers paid out of local. Probably by the end of the year, we'll have to move three and maybe four more to local to increase that. So, what that's based on for next year is what I think it's going to end up being at the end of this year, moving forward with the salary increases again.
So, we're down to twenty four point six seven?
That's what we, not right now, but I think we're going to end up with about twenty four by the end.
Right now, we're at twenty.
Yes.
And that, that does reflect the reduction in our local teacher numbers based on the small school, the small rural school.
Funding.
That we traditionally receive from the state as well as from Centville Fifteenth, that Senator Davis and President Corbin worked on for us. And that's reflected in our requests over the past couple of years. You can see that in sixteen seventeen, we requested two million, that was in preparation for the K-3 council class law, which didn't go into effect, and also because the additional state-paid positions, the six positions that we received from the state.
So.
Let me get this straight again, we're down to twenty four point something?
Twenty point six seven.
Oh, twenty point six seven, but you'd think it might have to go to twenty four.
We'll probably have to add three to four by the end of the school.
Now, is that, does that, he probably said his name, is that three to four included in that this big, the one, two forty-nine, that is included in there, correct?
Now, what's?
The salary of the kids.
What is not included in this, and something that I would like to request of worth considering, is principal requests that are based on safety, particularly mental health, and just developing relationships with kids. And this is in response to what we've heard from parents, teachers, and students over the past six weeks. As y'all know, since, since we last met to discuss the budget, we had a tragedy in Florida that saw seventeen students lose their lives. Since two thousand, there's been a hundred and forty-six school shootings, and over the past six weeks, parents, again, parents, teachers, and students have contacted my office at a greater rate than I've seen in the past in response to these tragedies. I don't know what happened, I can't exactly explain why this tragedy touched a nerve in our community like it has, but there's been a difference. Principals have indicated that, that teachers have communicated to them concerns, parents have contacted my office, we've heard from students. In response to that, principals have requested additional support, particularly with guidance counselors and administration. You have in your packet most of those requests. I can pull them up quick. These are not in this budget, so if you choose to consider these, we'd have to add them to the budget. But here is one from Mr. Maslin, Macam Middle School. He, prior to the school shooting, he had requested an additional assistant principal, and I think in response to the school shooting, but he can explain his reasoning behind a request for additional counselor as well.
Our, our mental health issues have doubled in the last three years. Two weeks prior, and two weeks prior to Easter break, we had two students that were hospitalized or actually commit, trying to commit suicide, and many in town. One came back yesterday, and then I had one yesterday, and who has been sexually assaulted, and that's been turned over. But we have so many issues right now, it, that's all we spend our time doing. And we have over forty-seven students who are getting Meridian help at school, and that's not coming.
Getting what help at school?
Counseling at home at school.
Okay, so, so you have a guidance counselor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, so are they equipped? So, I mean, a guidance counselor to me, I mean, so are they equipped to be able to help these students?
I'm going to be honest with you, the roles that we see now, every year, new things are put on schools, but the, the mental health, counselors aren't trained to do mental health. And so, we have counselors who are referring them through Marcy Holland and Annie Wishon, and we try to hook them up with Meridian. We have probably five or six right now that are on the waiting list for Meridian. I think the thing is, is.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow you, so tell me what Meridian is.
Meridian is our, used to be Macam Jackson's site.
Okay, okay.
Yes, and they, and what, they've come into the school, and thank goodness they have.
Okay, but you, but you're telling me you've got five and six waiting on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, which is the issue, because those five and six children have issues?
Yes.
And you're having to wait for them to get help, all right?
And then we're only seeing them once a week usually, and sometimes it's in a group setting, so it's not even, and I'm not being ugly, but I'm being truthful, these students need to be seen more than once a week by Meridian, but they're so over, you know, understaffed for what they have. But for us, there's so many kids that, that are, that have needs, that, that, I'm telling you, I'd do spend more time counseling and, and in guidance than I do in anything to do with administration.
All right, well, I guess it's hard for me to wrap my head around that, to be honest with you, I just can't quite understand that, because like, I don't know, like, if my child needed help, that's not where I'd seek my help, is at school, sorry, I just wouldn't. But I guess some of these kids have no other option. But I think, I know for me, as a school board member, I feel like it's something that we need to make sure happens.
It's hard, it's hard to provide kids an education if they have mental health issues that are preventing them from being able to learn.
Absolutely, but I.
And that's, that's, that's something that we've always dealt with, but I think that what, what we've seen in the past period of time, but particularly since Parkland, is a greater emphasis on reaching these kids, you know, for.
And if they're not Medicaid eligible?
They won't receive any.
Then, 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 Meridian won't see them. They are going to take the Medicaid eligible kids, so.
So, what happens to the other ones?
Ask McMahon.
Oh, we've got a lot of them who fall through the holes, and what's great about the Meridian in the schools is, before, we didn't have them there. If we need a threat assessment done, now at least, we have a Meridian person in our school, and we can have a threat assessment done, which we have one done every two weeks, I would say, on average. But, it's the students who we don't know about, and the students who fall through the cracks, and parents won't sign their waiver to let them, because a lot of parents don't want you in our business at home of what's going on. That's what I dealt with yesterday. Our community's changing, our dynamics in this community have definitely changed, and, but, you know, I.
Terry, Medicaid is based on financial?
Mm-hmm. And even some with financial who, who qualify, parents refuse to sign their student, their child up for it.
Because of the stigma, I would imagine.
And a lot of them have stuff to hide at home, don't want anybody to know what's going on, and all.
Right.
So, all right, so anyways.
So, basically, they're asking for guidance counselors to help deal with the children.
Our current situation is we're, I mean, I think we all knew this, every school that we're at, we probably have enough counselors. Our high school, we have almost thousand students, we have two. Most places have three or, or over. Scott has over six hundred students, at Minnesota, we only have one.
Same with V.I.
V.I. is the same thing, is that we have one counselor.
And so.
Yes, Carol.
And then we have two social workers that are wonderful, and they are responsible for about twenty-four hundred kids of these.
More than other councils give, the, the extra counselors and stuff from.
Most of them, every principal I've talked to has a seventh grade or an eighth grade assistant principal, we have an assistant principal for each grade group and a counselor.
Who pays for that?
I have no idea.
It has to come from local funding, period.
That's what's the goal in the motivation, is to have a counselor for every grade. Could I ask a question? Scott, could you take us through, okay, teacher sends a child to the office, you're the assistant principal, that, you know, and, and you feel like there's a mental health problem, that there's some warning signs to the things that we're talking about? Take us, take us through, then, you pick up the phone, you call Meridian.
Well, if, if, every situation's different. If we have someone who's self-harming, and they've been cutting, we have a procedure for that also, okay? We always notify the parent. If someone has communicated a self-harm, then there's another step we have to go through. We always work with Marcy and with Annie to go through that procedure, because then we may need to have an assessment done, we may need to, the Meridian recommendation can come from, from anything. It doesn't, it could be a trauma at home. So, the Meridian recommendations, we will make some, but there's some that get to a certain level if they're self-harming, where we may do, we've done two involuntary commitments in the last three weeks. So, that's where.
What is that?
IBC involuntary commitments, where we're committing them because they think they're a harm to the, a threat to themselves or someone else.
Not, not us.
Not, well, it could be.
But we, we refer it, someone else has to make.
Well, yeah, well, the Meridian person, actually, at our, at our school, your old counselor, Mr. Jim, he, he did one last week, two weeks ago at our school. So, you know, they can, Meridian can actually do it. It can be us, it can be a parent, we've had parents who do it. So, it's, it's, I just need to come around and walk around and say, committed. They will be sent to Franklin, to Angel Community Hospital, to the hospital over here, and they will hold them until they get a placement somewhere, it can be Raleigh, it can be Winston, that's usually anywhere from three days to ten days, they'll hold them, they'll make a, the school, that's, that's more and more has been dumped onto us, and I shouldn't say dumped, because these are our kids. Like I said before, Dr. Baldwin, they're going to judge, and they'll get the curly gates on their test scores. But at the same time, it's a community, this is a community issue, okay? It's not a school issue. And to me, our community, and our county commissioners, and our school board, and our parents, and our business owner in this community, has to put that first, the health and well-being of our kids. And that costs money. Now, we can talk about it, everybody's great in talking how much something costs, but are willing to pay the price to fix it. And you're right, it can't, within, by all means, that's what, that's exactly what we need to do.
Well, I think a good example of a program is the leadership program, that it is extremely expensive.
That's what we're saying, so, we have those things going on, so, but again, we're on the budget here, so I hate to sound rude, when we do do.
Well, how would you like for me to just really quickly tell you of the personnel requests that principals have made? I know Mr. Maslin mentioned guidance counselor, his AP is actually, his request, is it in the budget, Angie?
Yes.
Do we have here?
Yes.
This, he has also requested an additional counselor. Mr. Woody's asked for two additional counselors, one for each grade level at Franklin High School, he currently has two. He had two more, that would be a counselor for each grade level, and an additional assistant principal, which we lost. There was two, there were, there were three assistant principals at Franklin High School back in two thousand and ten eleven, and there are currently only two.
Right, so that is in the files for security measures, or it's in the budget now?
Yes, it's not in there, that's something that, that.
Left compile the numbers, get those figures.
That's correct. Ms. Cotton at Union, who was down there, she just left because of a, of a potential threat that she's happened to consider. Here's, here's the reasons that she gave for requesting an, an additional school counselor.
Do they currently have one there?
They do not. They have an assistant principal. A few years ago, they had a counselor, and we had a person that didn't have a counselor certification, but they did have some administration, so they converted the position of counselor to assistant principal to help out.
Dr. Baldwin, could I request that, when this is brought to, I would say, the county commissioners, because that's where you're asking the money, that possibly that you might, could take a, a couple of people with you and tell them why? Because I know for me, when you asked for the guidance counselor, I just assumed that meant, you know, our guidance counselor does a lot of testing, and does, there's just a lot of things, that, I just didn't know that you were trying to address these issues with them. It's just, that just run out today, so I just feel like that, educate them on why we're asking for this, and I just feel like it's, it's much more than what I thought it was.
Well, and that's a good point. You know, since two thousand, guidance counselors, and even school psychologists, have transitioned from therapeutic services to testing services.
That's great.
I, I just think it would educate them on the, the, I guess I needed educated, so they might be in the same position that I am, that they didn't understand that they're, that, that their roles are bigger than I understood.
We'll, let me give you one more discouraging factor, and we'll see if Carol agrees with it. My understanding is, is that the pipeline for counselors is drying up. We have less and less children that go into college that are moving forward into the counseling area, just for the very reasons you're talking about. When you're a counselor, you're faced with multitude of things that you have going on in the school system day, people just don't want to get into it. It's too, it's too involved, and too emotional, and too drained, so the pipeline to find good quality counselors is narrowing now and shrinking yearly, so it's almost impossible to find. I mean, we've had, we've had difficulties ourselves, like Carrie's not as happy, finding people to fill what, what positions we have.
Most of them are in loud entry, yeah. We have, we have issues. You know, in, in old days, they were, they were guidance counselors.
Right, and that's not how, that's not how it is now.
And you didn't have a million tests. You came along, and your seniors or your juniors, the second semester, got ready for the SAT and the ACT, now they got a million tests, and they're super, they're, they're bogged down with tests, and in reality, it's probably very discouraging. I mean, you know better than anybody, because you're right, but it, you know, it just seems like they don't do what they went in there, that their hearts was telling them, why they wanted the profession, to be a counselor to young people. There's the test supervisor.
I think the other part we've already touched on, this way, now, when you throw in our current student population, social media, it's a whole new, we're in an arena that, I'm old enough to know, I just sometimes have a hard time understanding, but it's, you throw that on top, and we'll see if Mr. Woody agrees, basically, like high school level, middle grade, Scott, fifth minutes, you throw all those factors together, and what was a quote guidance counselor is no longer a quote guidance, it is, it's a different, it's a different animal.
We've caught Facebook Monday, Twitter Tuesday, Snapchat Wednesday, that's what you deal with over the weekend, like she said, what they posted all weekend, Monday morning's the first time they see each other.
Right.
And that's when you don't expect.
Everyone, that's one little thing I noticed. I'm a little worried about the phrase that Mr. Childs used years ago, and it's stayed with me. Public education, we, it's what he called, we call it the melting pot. The way Gary put it was, we take them all, guys, we don't, we don't exclude anybody, we don't put anybody out there, they all come to us, and we take them all, and then we try to do the best we can for everybody. But when you're faced with limited resources, it's, I think that's what surface tension we're talking about right now, the frustration level that we all have is very, very intense because strictly the resources that are available limit what we can and cannot do, and that's very, very, that's depressing. It's, Carol.
And I want to say one thing, too, with regard to our social workers, that you may not know, is that monthly, they bring to the table children that need to be referred for mental health needs, for things like social services, a multitude of things that are on the table before you start reading, writing, and arithmetic. And we have social services here, the health departments, and all of the agencies that touch children and can help us, and they're here to help, and they listen, and we staff each case, but we've got, we're to the point now that we're going to have more cases than we have slots of people to help. And so, they're trying and working very hard, but with about twenty-five hundred kids of these, I would like to, you know, play for more social workers as well, if we're going to make home visits.
Addressing needs.
All, and in addition to that, we've just reported close to almost fifty homeless children in Macon County that our social workers also serve.
And how many foster kids?
Foster kids, we have, well, we have foster kids from all counties that come to Macon County, but we're serving about twenty foster children as well, and we're also responsible for those, and to provide school supplies, lunches, and we provide clothes and everything for these families that they live with on a regular basis. So, we've got to put those children in their arena as well. So, it's just getting bigger and bigger, and it's more than what you give.
To clarify, or to add to what Stephanie mentioned a minute ago about parents, in defense of parents, I think sometimes it's hard for parents to keep up with what else is out there available to kids. I know, as a parent myself, you know, when my son first got a cellphone, I had no idea what that thing was capable of, and tried to stay on top of that. Now, going back to what Mr. Woody said as well, though, he, he mentioned gaggle. In addition to our gaggle net, which has a filter on it, and Tim, you want to speak about the type of words like, I know, if a student uses a word like hit, or kill, or cut, or sex, or anything like that, it flags, and we're able to, you want to explain some of that, too?
Yeah, people send the principal and whoever designated that school, and it will hold the email, so it won't send it on to the student it's supposed to be going to, and will the principal review it. If they send a pornographic image or email, that it never makes it to the intended recipient, but the principal gets, and whoever lived at the school, you got it to counsel it here and then they're good.
In addition to gaggle net, we've also got the Speak Up app on our iPads, and students can download this on their cellphones, parents can download it on their cellphones. And what I pulled up here is my email, which anytime a student uses that Speak Up app to make us aware of a crime, that, potential crimes that may have been committed, you know, I get that email. Now, some of them, for instance, one, there's one on here that, you know, they use the Speak Up app to point out that they no longer have French III offered at Franklin High School, but, so sometimes it, it doesn't get used appropriately, but it is an opportunity, Speak Up app is an opportunity for students and parents to make us aware of crimes that may be going on.
One thing, and I'm going to add what Mr. Maslin said, and kind of bring Stephanie up, a lot of times, we get these on weekends, you check your mail on weekends, you can't wait till Monday morning to act on that, so a lot of times, Annie and Marcy and our guidance counselors, our SROs get called on Friday night, Saturday morning, and stuff like that, so this, it's a, it's a seven-day process, you just don't work hard about Friday morning, if you check it on Saturday.
I know, but think about, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about this, I mean, you're checking emails about this other stuff, you're doing that, which you have to do, but you are not educating them at that time. You know what, you're not, there's just so much more to it than trying to get them to take a good math course, get them to a higher job.
Exactly, but you know, you gotta act, because if something happens, you didn't act, then you know, you're bad.
One funny story, it's not funny, but I got a phone call three weeks ago, and I'm going to promise it's it. I got a phone call from this lady from Catawba County, she was a psychiatrist, and wanted to know about a student that I had at my school, and she wanted to warn me that her son had been communicating him on Xbox, because they'd started gaming against each other, and now all they do is talk, and he'd said some things to her son that concerned her. So, I got a phone call from a parent, from, she was a psychiatrist, in another county, telling me about a student at our school that she was concerned with.
We've had similar calls from Hammershed County this year, we've.
So, and this is through a gaming system, which is, I just never, yeah, education, our education is trying to get these kids to value themselves and, and understand all these issues. Math, science, reading, math, that, I mean, English, all that secondary right now, I mean, middle school.
Which I think is a sad thing to hear.
It really is secondary, because half, more than, probably sixty percent of my time is spent dealing with this stuff, nothing, probably eighty percent, twenty percent dealing with education, honest to goodness.
Mr. Chairman, real quick to go ahead and make the board aware that South Macon and Union are on lockdown right now, they're investigating the possibility that a student may have brought a weapon to Union Academy.
Here we go.
And why is South Macon? Because they're close to each other?
Right.
So, I guess that just goes right back to, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say this statement, and then I will stay away from the subject, but, it's a prime example, and it is hard for me to understand, and I appreciate you guys trying to educate me on it. I, I don't think money fixes everything, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Baldwin. But from what everybody in this room is saying, from a parent, to a teacher, to a principal, to a grandparent, that it might not be, should be our responsibility, but it is becoming our responsibility? And to educate our children, we're going to have to do things to make it, oh, to, to, Dr. Baldwin just said, Stephanie, we can't educate our children without getting their heads straight.
Education means a myriad of things in today's society, in today's world, so that's how it is.
And in defense of parents, again, we have kids over eight hours per day, parents have them while they're asleep most of the time. We do bear a lot of responsibility for, for what they're doing for the majority of their waking hours.
And I'm not saying it's all the parents' issue, I mean, I do think as parents, we, I mean, we all have to step up and do our part, but I agree with you, I mean, I, I count on our school to do a lot of things. And there's people at our school that counsel my child for different reasons, in different ways. I mean, her math teacher counsels her in, in life sometimes.
I think we're, we'll move on, and I think you're right, I think we're blessed with educators we have, I think they're very aware of it, they can do is listen to the principals. I think there, you can tell they're a very caring group, and we're all trying to do what's best for the children, as long as we continue to do that, life is good, or as good as we can make it.
And maybe our focus has to change to make sure that we are giving them that, even if we have to spend our money there, where in the past we've not wanted to, was, maybe we have to make sure we spend it there to get it to what we want in the classroom, and I guess that's a little bit of a iota.
But that's true, I think it goes back to what that retired administrator pointed out, and that is the importance of relationships in the school system. We, we have, we have to address that before we can address anything else.
I think you're so right, and I think relationships make a difference, whether you're running a business, whether you're running a bank, giving a loan, teaching them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The principals have requested what amounts to about five positions, so that should add approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that PRC 001, or wherever you want to put the guidance counselor, would that be 001, or?
The O seven.
007. So, you will see, now, there was a request for at least one assistant principal, too, so that would be in.
Hello, five.
So, 001 shouldn't change it?
But the total cost, talking about what you're saying, is, is that, that the position to be counselors for?
Somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's going to be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Angie knows some categories that will need to go a little bit. All right, what I suggest we do is go through it and then we may come back and have some more discussion after we see the final figures.
Next is 002, central office. There's not much change in this. Angie, you want to go ahead and point out how much the state allot us for central office and how much of that we're able to defer to the schools, even though the central office allotment from the state has been reduced?
Right now, we get a little over $500,000 for central office administrators. And we have been able to, historically, back four or five years ago, I guess it was, that wasn't enough to take care of the central office administration. But in the last probably two or three, or maybe four, we've actually been able to do some waivers and move that elsewhere. And I just did one last week for about $28,000 that I'm going to move into 003, which takes care, that will help fund a custodian or substitute pay or, or something like that, non-instructional support. So you can see right there about $64,000 is all that we take out of local for central office. And that is a contract and phone reimbursements, basically is all that is, some mileage.
If you want to talk about why we have to take that out of local as opposed to use state money for that?
You can't use state money for a contract for that, for that particular purpose. There was no line item in there for a contract. Central office administration state is just for a director, an administrator, or superintendent. There's only line items specifically that you can use for those things. So if you take anything else out of there that falls into that specific category, then it would have to come out of local money. And there's not a line item at all for any kind of telephone allowance or anything like that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe in 2010, 11, 2011, 12, the central office budget was over $800,000 and now it's less than $500,000.
You're right. I was about to make the statement, if you compare, if you look at what we've done over the past eight years, let's face it, up in here, let's put it that way. The cost of the, of the central office in comparison to other school systems, I think would be miniscule compared to what others do. So I, I don't have a lot of patience when I get, when I hear about where other staff at the central office, I just don't have much patience for that, so.
I think maybe we should put in for volunteers at the central office. I'm not sure that'll make your life easy, but you know, if you have extra time and you're...
Okay.
We did, we did get adopted by church, local church. They, they did, they do provide us breakfast and things like that, which is much appreciated.
I was going to say that's pretty...
Uh, PRC 003.
Okay, PRC 003 is non-instructional support. That was the one I was just talking about where I did a waiver and we're going to move money into there as soon as it's approved. That is custodians, clerical, and substitute pay.
And there is an increase in that line item, Angie, if you want to talk about what we, how we read the budget for that?
Okay, there is an increase. We get money from the state for that. It's not enough to cover all of our, like I said, this is your custodians, your clerical people, your data managers, all your school bookkeepers, and any substitute pay that comes out of, for anything other than EC or vocational specific programs. We've had to put all of our clerical people on local 003. We keep the, I think I went through this before. We keep all of our custodians on the state 003 because workers' comp picks that up. So if they're state paid, then workers' comp picks up. Typically, it's your custodians that might have a workers' comp claim, so you keep all those on the state in order to keep those, the workers' comp paying for the state, I mean, the state people and workers' comp. We have, what Dr. Baldwin was saying, we've increased that a little bit. We did not have enough to fund all of our custodians. And if you remember two or three years ago, we used to do waivers from AIG money, PRC 34 and 54, which is ESL funds. And we used to move some of that into these to take care of that. They've limited that, we can't do that anymore. So we're having to pick that up locally and do that to take them out of local. So those waivers have stopped. And so that is basically the reason that's increased is because there's no...
And another reason that it has increased is because we moved uniforms, our central office allotment to...
Not uniforms, but we did use a contract. There's a contract that we have that took the place of two custodians, a custodial contract. And we had it in 806 historically, which is central office services. But we moved that into 003 because really that is custodial work and that's where it should be. So we, and there's going to be a couple of things as we go through here where we've moved them as far as coding goes, that they're in a different area. Money necessarily hasn't changed, but they're just going to show up in a different section.
So it's not that we're requesting that much more for the assistance, it's just that we've shifted that from 807, 707?
That was 806.
Any questions about PRC 003?
205 of the schools have school receptionists.
No, there should be 11 in there. Oh, receptionists, yes, you're right. There's only actually, I think there's only three that have receptionists. Yeah, Franklin High School, Macon Middle, and Mountain View actually have receptionists.
That's our three larger schools.
And South Macon has a 75% of reception. Okay, next one is 005. That is school administrators, that's principals and assistant principals. The only thing that is in there basically is the principal supplements for our larger schools and retirement hospitalization that are associated with that. And we have one still that is under the Health Harmless Act, or two actually that are under the Health Harmless Act. That was imposed last year. And that has to come...
That has to be documented?
Part of it's local money because of the longevity that is coming out of there. So it's not all, no. The state picks up the bulk of that, but you can see that's not, that total is $58,000.
And that's, we're going to get information from the state that representatives that indicate that the state is going to address that whole harmless coming up.
They are discussing it strongly is what I'm hearing, kind of hurting thing for sure.
Mr. Jader, Mr. Woody are nearly as concerned about that as we are.
007 is your guidance and your media, and that's what Dr. Baldwin was referring to earlier. We do have guidance, it's hard to find guidance counselors. That is, that is actually just one guidance position and that person is actually not certified at this time. So we're having to pay that person out of local. But hopefully by that point in time, she will be. But that doesn't mean if we have to find another person, that that person will be certified. And we may have to give them time to get their certification in that area. 009 is just the annual leave and the longevity and, and things that are paid out when somebody leaves or teacher assistants still get longevity. Teachers and principals no longer get it, but that is for the people who are paid out of local that the benefits have to be paid out of local. And that's basically based on last year's amounts. The one with the assumption that that's not going to be anymore. Drivers Ed, we've not been budgeting anything, PRC 12. We've not been budgeting anything in there because we have moved a teacher to a state position, which is a position allotment. So the state picks up his salary. So we're, those funds can be rerouted and used elsewhere where we would have to take a high-paid person out of local, which we would rather not do in our budget. PRC 13 is, there's a contract in there for the audit cert, audit services that Franklin High School offers through Southwestern. That's the amount of the contract, $8,000 is that last line item. Their other difference is a national board, is a teacher who is not necessarily teaching 75% of the time. So rather than taking the national board amount away, because they're still serving our students, but that national board differential has to be paid out of local funds. PRC 15 is technology. I think it's pretty much the same, other than a small increase, and that's for the salaries and the benefits of the IT department. PRC 27 is teacher assistants, and that's going to increase a little bit. We do not have enough teacher assistant funding from the state to cover the amount of teacher assistants that we have. And at this point, we have about six or seven, what we call TA twos. We hire those and they're limited to work 29 and a half hours. So there's no benefits associated with those. We'll take those out of local because they're less expensive obviously than to...
Angie, could you review for us now where we are K through three with teacher assistants?
I think at this point, we have teacher assistants in all K through two classrooms.
No, K one.
K one, sorry.
Now, not all of them are full-time. Some of them are, how many, how many 29-hour?
I think we have six, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe seven.
Now, moving forward, because we're over budget in teacher assistants. If, you know, we're going to have to either reduce the number of teacher assistants we have, increase the number of part-time teacher assistants we have. We can, we can basically pay for two 29 and a half hour teacher assistants for what one full-time teacher assistant costs. So if moving forward, as we lose a teacher assistant, we may hire back a TA two, which will be a part-time person. Same money.
And I'm not getting any word from the state on teacher assistant funding, that it's going to be any different than what it has been.
I had a substitute that I respect a lot, a substitute in the second grade. She did, she said she didn't see how teachers could do that, teachers assistant. And I respect that right there.
Ready? Okay, PRC 28 is local staff development. Basically, those numbers are just the same as what we, that is money that we actually divvy out to each individual school. Those numbers are based on their 10th day numbers after school starts. So I have just plugged in the same numbers that we use this current year until we know exactly what that's going to be. And that's for them to go to workshops and different places that they... PRC 32, I skipped over because that's Medicaid and we don't know from year to year what that's going to be. And that's self-supporting, so that does not use any of our local current expense funding from the commissioners at all. PRC 36 has went up a little bit and that's based, that's the charter schools, the amount that we have to give monthly to charter schools. And that's increased basically this year due to virtual public schools. The bills that we've been getting from them have increased. So that's an estimate of what that's going to be. 45, we'll skip over because that was the bonuses that were in there a couple of years ago. And I don't foresee that happening again this year.
I wrote this for a second, Angie.
Sure.
Charter schools, we have, there's no way to monitor that, correct? In terms of knowing for sure?
We do get a roster and I check with Ms. Kay back in Power School, she can look. We, we can check the addresses, but basically, other than that, there's no way to track them down and see that they're actually...
Do it.
We can check and see, number one, that they were enrolled in our school. And they are Macon County addresses.
But we have no way to...
But we have no way of... Okay, PRC 49, we'll skip that one. That is pre-K and that's also self-supporting. So that's, that's no funding used by current expense. PRC 56 is the local portion of the, this is the yellow bus transportation that the students to and from schools. So this is if there's not enough state transportation, 56, this is where it spills over. And that's basically based on last year's numbers too, that's why that increased a little bit. And we also had to add the line item where we are paying for their medical exams, if y'all remember, we've done that. So that's an addition, 56. 61 is instructional supplies and local library materials. That's another one that we wait till the 10th day because that's, all that money's just divided out by the schools and we wait till they see the ADM on the 10th day to figure out what that's going to be.
Well, let's, let's talk about that a little bit, Angie. What's in that?
That, that one particular is local, it's local instructional supplies and local library.
Well, members, you may hear that, that teachers don't get any local money for instructional supplies. But it's in the budget. We do send it out to schools and they do get local money for instructional supplies. It's not a lot, you divide up $97,000 between 350 teachers.
Teachers.
But it's, they do get some local money.
So the principals get that and then divvy it out, so they might do a little something different with it, right?
Sometimes they'll make bulk purchases. Any of the principals want to comment on how they spend that money? Sometimes I know, I did it differently in Nantahala and Franklin High School. In Nantahala, I just gave the teachers, I think it was a hundred dollars a piece, and they were able to use.
Mine about you, Andrew.
Can I ask a question? Peter, last year or the year before in our budget, we knew there was a real problem for the teachers in copier paper. And we added another, what, $10,000 to that contract. Now is that gone?
Tim, we've, I've, so we've not heard a lot about copier paper recently.
I have, I have, no, I haven't had any complaints about that. Our, with copy costs, now we don't pay for black and white prints, who, who are charged.
I think that the other thing too is teaching transition more to electronic.
And that's what we buy ourselves.
What's that?
We buy all of our paper, always have our local, our state construction.
Yeah.
If everything, Coach, maybe talk about...
I think when you talk about the colored printer, a lot of schools, I know I only have one colored printer for our high schools. I mean, if you don't save a lot of money, you can monitor that.
Coach, you remember, I think the discussion we had was about the contracts we had with the actual copier provider. I think every school had, it had, we have a contract and limited the number of copies that you could make. And that's what the money we're finding out came in.
This, this new contract that was approved...
Tim, yeah, Tim worked very diligently on the contract and I think now we're in much better shape than what we were right then.
Right, we're not paid, we're not paying for prints like we were on white, white print. We still pay for color, but we don't have a one hell of a machine in these schools when we just control that.
I think teachers using things like Google Books, things like that to a greater extent now too. 68?
Yep. The only thing in 68 there is another national board differential. This is a teacher, Dr. Baldwin referred to, a teacher that went to Union and is helping serve as an assistant principal. That person had their national boards. If they're not in the classroom, at least 75%, they are not entitled to have their national boards paid out of state funds. So we had to pick that up locally. So we did, we healed her harmless and we're still paying that. So that's what that is. 413 is also pre-K, so that's not, there is no local current expense money used for that, that's self-supporting. 501 has been, that's part of Ms. Love's STEM and grant stuff and we've combined that with something else. So that's, we're not, that's in another line item, we'll get to that later. 533 is the big one, that's, you'll go through that. That's the, that's the local paid supplements that are paid out in November for all of our teachers and teacher assistants. Those are the two groups of people that hit those. That's gone up a little bit, but that's basically based on the salary increases.
Now, Angie, we requested 479 last year, correct?
That was in the draft budget and then that 465 is actually what we split.
But we requested 479 last year, we're only requesting 472 this year to decrease.
And still, I don't know the salary increases at this time for teacher assistants or teachers other than that A schedule. So that's kind of, that's again, an estimate.
That's, that's what we were requesting before we know what the actual...
Is that the one that was in last year's budget? The proposed one, where they bumped everybody up to the 15 and above 50?
They have one for the A schedule, but as far as non-certified people and stuff, which teacher assistants fall into, I don't know. We, and I need to point that out, I have built for non-certified people, there is a thousand dollar increase in this budget for the non-certified people. I don't know that that's what's going to be.
That's what they got last year.
That's what last year's was, so that's what we're going with. 701 is VIP, so that's a self-supporting program. 706 is the other transportation and that's the activity buses and all the county cars. That's what that comes out of, a portion of the transportation, bus garage guys are paid out of that, so that's their salaries. And that's all of the repair parts, gas and fuel that's used for those vehicles. Those have to be kept separate. 740 is summer adventure camp, that is the self-supporting program, so we'll skip over that. 802 is all of our insurance and stuff. It's gone up a little bit, as you can see. Well, property insurance and then if we, that will probably continue to go up because as we add, if we're going to do the renovation at South Macon, we will have to add that on there, so that will increase. So that's kind of reflected in there. 804 is athletics and co-curricular dues, supplements, dues and insurance, and field maintenance. 805 is board member salaries, workshop expense, and legal... Eight oh-five is board member salaries, workshop expense, and legal expenses. Eight oh-six, this is one of those categories that we've moved some line items around, but they're no longer there, so you'll see that. That's a little bit of a change, just when we've moved stuff around. This contains the copier contract that you were talking about, touch, it's went down. And then we have supplies and materials, and these are our audit, this is our audit expense.
Just to point out to eight oh-six, remember, the PRC oh, we were talking about when we moved that on oh-three? That PRC went up about three hundred thousand dollars. You'll notice that PRC eight oh-six has gone down about three hundred thousand dollars. So, we just, it felt like it was more appropriate to have those custodial contracts in PRC oh-three rather than Central Office Services. It was confusing to kind of commissioners at times.
Okay, so this is our membership dues. We pay RISA set fee every year to take classes and stuff over there. This is where all that falls into. And also superintendent travel expenses and workshop expenses along with... That's all. Okay, eight oh-seven is the next one. That is a vocational rehab contract that we pay out every year. I don't know if Nancy or Todd, who's... Okay. You want to explain that a little bit? What's that?
I don't know a whole lot about it. I just know that we get an invoice every year, and we're splitting it between the, between three counties, Jackson, Swain, and Macon. So, it usually comes to about nine thousand dollars of rehab, works with students with disabilities in high school, helps them job, get jobs and that type of thing.
The rest of eight oh-seven is divided out amongst the schools, other than the principal travel, but that is the postage that we give the schools each year. And the uniforms are in there. We've moved that into eight oh-seven, because that goes out to the school. That's based on the number of, well, the postage is based on the ADM. The uniforms are based on the set fee per custodian, but that's for...
Oh, the uniforms for custodians?
Yes, it's for the custodians.
Do they just have shirts or something?
They have shirts and pants, and then we furnish the custodians and maintenance department, and bus garage, red steel shoes, or some kind of safety. Eight oh-eight is... The three twenty-six is down there, if you see, about halfway. That's divided out by the schools. That's for contract repair and maintenance at each school. If they wanted to get a load of gravel, or if they wanted to repair something at other schools. That's also based on last year's numbers. That'll be, that will be decided on, on the tenth day. The rest of it is our maintenance salaries, pest control, water testing that we have to do with Iowa and Manahala. And then general maintenance is in this category. So, everything that Mr. Tracy spends through maintenance, fixing everything and keeping everything going, that's the part that that comes out of. Eight oh-nine is utilities. That's our electricity. And that has increased, and what I did on this one with the proposed increase by Duke Energy, which I still don't know what that's gonna be at this time. I think they've asked for like fourteen percent. But what we did was go, I went back to last year and saw the exact expenses that we had spent at the end of the year, and I added six percent at this time. So, that's what's in this year's budget, so that may or may not. I don't think of the fourteen percent. The last article I read, it looked like it was gonna be staged, and it would be over a period of three different years. So, I don't think that they'll get a total of fourteen percent at one time, but we'll see what happens there. The other part is natural gas, water and sewer, and then fuel facilities. We still have some schools that have boilers, so that's the fuel for facilities that is in there. And then that's also, that last item in there is the garbage collection, and that's for all schools. That's what we pay for garbage pickup, all of that in those questions. Eight thirty-one is our contract for New Century Scholars, and that's not changed in the last several years. It's a contracted position with Ms. Collins, and then there's a little bit of postage and a little bit of supplies and materials in there. And the last, well, next to the last category, eight sixty-four is character ed. That's also based on the ADM on the tenth day. And that's a set amount that goes to each school. And then eight eighty-three is the cultural arts match, and that's always been in there, and that's money that we pay the Macon County Arts Council for them. They do programs within our schools, and that's just to help offset their cost. And that sums up the expenditure side of it, if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chairman, that reflects about a one point seven percent increase over last year. And just to point out, there's really no expansion items in there. That's just simple costs, increases. And I would just like to point out that, if I'm not mistaken, in the five years that I've been superintendent, our budgets have never reflected expansions. They have reflected cost increases. And I don't say that with a great deal of pride. I point that out simply to say that in the five years that I've been here, we have not been focused on finding ways to improve our academics. We've not been focused on trying to find ways to improve what we're providing in terms of services to students. The only thing that we've done in five years, and I, this is a shame that I say this, but we've looked at ways to cut costs and cut positions and do that sort of thing, rather than look at ways to improve. And I'd like to see that change.
It's time to do this, to take that, have that conversation. You're exactly right. We may be headed to that in here just a second, so.
Yeah, in the bottom, right there at the end, we're six, about the six teachers of K through three, legislation remains the same. Have we received a break on that, or are we still in?
That was on there from last year's draft budget, when we had that planned, that we thought we were gonna have to do this. So, that's why those numbers are a little bit higher, like particularly on oh-one, like Dr. Baldwin was saying, for last year's draft budget.
Now, eighteen nineteen, we don't have to worry about it. In nineteen twenty, we may see some changes. And we, it depends on what the state does with their budget. You know, the class sizes haven't changed, and they may provide additional money for those enhancement programs. It just, but that all remains to be seen, how they're gonna handle that.
I'd like to make the recommendation that we recommend to the State School Board Association that they use their influence with the state legislature to have, try to influence them, to have a member of legislature attend at least one of these meetings in their district. And we're fortunate, we have, one of our fellows was a member of the school board for many, many years. But I would venture to say that, like Mr. Shields attends these as a liaison from the commission, so he has a good understanding of what these meetings are all about. But I would imagine that a huge, huge percentage of state legislature have never set foot in one of these local... And they may be under the assumption that they're funding a whole lot more than the fifty-some percent. But if they were, if they could sit through one of these, and if there's any way we could do some kind of emphasis to the State School Board Association to do that.
We always send them requests from a considering. Check with the other membership counties and see if there's a like sentiment and push for it, Coach. It's a good suggestion, so.
Revenues?
When you break now, we go first, we get to see the revenues.
I can handle it, anybody? Some of the principals may have delayed the list. Do you have any questions for them, Mr. Chairman?
No, like I said, I appreciate everybody's input, but I don't think I have any questions. Any board members have any questions? The principal? Here, Paul, Paul has got him.
Okay. Thank you to all y'all.
Thank you for everything they do.
Okay, the last part is the revenue side of it. Pretty much all I can do is go by what we receive this current year and hope that we're gonna get at least the same or somewhere comparable next year. Timber sales, we did, we budgeted fifty-three thousand dollars for this current year. We got a little over sixty, so I went ahead and budgeted sixty thousand for next year in hopes that we get somewhere in the same neighborhood. County appropriation, I left the same. It's been the same the last two years. Actually, it went down two hundred thousand dollars each year. It used to be seven three three eight. The last couple of years, it's been seven one three eight. So, I just went ahead and assumed that it would be the same for next year. Funds and forfeiture is run pretty much the same year to year. Use of schools, we don't take that much in for the use of schools. Rent out, a lot of its benefits have stuck, and they give the schools free of charge for those type of things for the community, so we don't, we can't count on a whole lot of revenue for that. Interest on investments, that's went up a little bit, so we budgeted ten thousand dollars for that. Miscellaneous local receipts has went up a little bit, and that's from stuff they have... They have apparently started imposing an occupancy tax and an animal... I think it's an animal, charge for harassing animals or something. We've been getting a check for, from the county, little bits each month. It's not much, but it's added a little bit over the whole year. So, that has increased, and I'm assuming that's gonna continue. The WAN engineer is the amount that we get from four other counties, Tim?
Yeah.
We share a WAN engineer with four other counties, and we're the fiduciary agent, so that money comes through us. So, that's the revenue that comes from those other counties to fund that position. Sales tax refund has went down about twenty thousand dollars, so I budget accordingly for that. The rest of it is pretty much the same as far as indirect cost. That depends on how much federal money we get, and that's based on the amount that we get from the indirect cost from using those federal funds. ABC revenues, we have not received any money in the last two or three years for that, so I went ahead and...
Apparently, not selling alcohol.
It's my understanding, and it goes back to the Sheriff's Department, basically, through the DARE program, but I don't know that they still do the DARE program, so I'm not real sure about that. You can see the fund balance, obviously, most of you know that the expenditures have to balance the revenues. So, in order for that to happen, we had to budget six hundred eighty-five thousand eighty dollars and eighty cents for fund balance appropriated for next year. If we do that, that pretty much wipes out our fund balance for next year. And that's assuming that all this is accurate, and the raises are gonna be what we think we're gonna be, and we're gonna get the positions that we think we're gonna get.
And that's without those five additional positions?
And we know nothing about any of that right now at this point.
That is without those five additional positions. And just to clarify, when she says wiped out, she means wiped out.
It's zero.
Wait, Angie, I think you know how this discussion, right now, at the end of the year, your estimate that we would be about, being optimistic, fund balance after what we have had to take in years, would be around eight hundred thousand dollars. That's optimistic.
Yeah.
Probably a little bit less than that.
Yeah, I'm estimating, based on what I think we're gonna spend the rest, between now and the end of June, that we should end up somewhere around seven seventy-five or eight, somewhere in there.
The county commissioners, I think, that's what they wanted for us, not to have a bunch of a fund balance, because I believe they've said that they were on a fund balance, so now I think...
Well, we're there.
Yeah, well, so now hopefully, they're going to help us continue to educate our children, and maybe not just keep it at this level, but maybe improve our education.
Well, here's, we're red. Does anyone have any questions on the revenues? And we also, at this time, Dr. Ball, we don't have any figures on security.
No, sir. We've got that, those personnel requests. We've, we're still getting those in. I do have, one of the suggestions that Mike Anderson, who's with the Center for Safer Schools, DPI, was here last week. We asked him to visit Franklin High School and to give us some suggestions. I do have in your packet, the costs of one of the things that he suggested, which was to improve the front entrance. That's also one of the things that some of the parents have communicated that is concerning to them, and some of the things that the teachers pointed out. That first page on your packet that you received, there is from teachers at Franklin High School, a request that they've made to improve security at Franklin High School. We'll have to move through that, and some of these things are redundant. Some of these may be able to be addressed through other means, but these are the requests that the teachers have made. I'll have to put a dollar amount for that. We're working on that right now.
There was a, we still have to break into two categories. I have to have our, we need to factor into our capital outlay request.
Yes.
They also need to factor into the personnel request.
Yes.
And right now, the personnel, we really don't know how much that will be.
Looked like to be around two hundred fifty thousand.
Two fifty, so if we're going to, I'm looking forward, and if we're gonna factor those changes for security, then we would end up between different categories, aren't you correct?
Yes.
So, that moves our figure from eight eight seventeen to what? It's a two hundred fifty thousand. It'll be over nine, and that's what that'd be?
Nine oh six seven six six two.
Well, we were told this would be the big year, but it's eight years here.
Oh, yeah. So, actually, the way I look at it, guys, and then I'll open up the discussion. We have, we've got about three different options that we need to consider. One is that we just take without any additional for the security. We'd be approving a budget of eight, eight million eight hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. That would also include, however, us taking six hundred, six hundred eighty-five thousand eighty dollars out of our fund balance, if we keep it at that level. So, we've got three choices. We keep it to level, we increase it by the amount we'd have taken of fund balance, which means we would then approve, adding the, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, six eighty-five, that would mean we would then approve nine five oh two. Is that not right?
Six eighty-five oh eight.
Eight eight, no, eight eight seventeen, and then six eighty-five.
Right.
So, it's nine five oh two, I thought. What is that?
He's asking to take, not using...
Yep, yep, not using fund balance. The figure, if we take the amount without adding the two fifty, we take the eight million eight hundred, and the estimated amount we'd have to take the fund balance, if we did not take the fund, out of fund balance, we'd have to, we'd leave that nine, nine million five oh two, nine eighty, correct?
That's right.
However, if we add the two hundred fifty thousand to that, then that figure's gonna be what? Nine seven, what, nine seven? Nine seven, nine seven fifty-two. Oh, nine eighty, right?
Right.
Or if we just add the two fifty, then we have the nine million sixty-seven, a lot of figures. Do y'all follow my wandering around? You got about four, about three or four different options?
We take a break before we make a decision.
We will. I'm just gonna give you something to think about while we're taking a break. And we come back, all right?
You know, I know that that seems like a lot, but it is a lot. It would be less if we hadn't had a manager cut for the past two years of two hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand dollars, you know, that would be, would have made a big difference, shall we say. Let's take a ten-minute break, and then come back and discuss about it, but we'll get back.
I'll try to get an update on Southmacon and you?
Okay, if you would, please.
Yeah.
All right, at this time, let's come back into our session. I think everybody's there, so we'll move forward. And I think Dr. Baldwin's giving good news that the lockdown at our two schools has been lifted, because, do we have any more information, Dr. Baldwin?
What I know at this time, Mr. Chairman, is that the school administrator and SRO were made aware at Union that a student may be in possession of a gun. When they learned of that information, they placed the school on lockdown. Union Academy was placed on lockdown. A perimeter lockdown was done at Southmacon, just out of abundance of caution. The school has since been searched. Students have been searched. No gun has been found. So, I assume that the Sheriff's Department is still pursuing that potential threat off-campus. And that's all the information that I have at this point. Parents have been, I know that at least two calls have been scheduled to go out from Union Academy, or from Southmacon and Union Academy both. I don't know where they are in terms of doing those call-outs at this point, but they've got at least two planned.
Good.
They let the parents know that there was a lockdown, and I believe they're letting them know that that lockdown has been lifted.
Appropriate response. I said, we'll come back to our budget if we have, next, I think, is... Oh, no, let's go ahead and, sorry, I changed my mind. That's all right. I'll say something, I changed it.
I'm good. I'm in the school board, I'm in this, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You're good.
I'm going to be down. Quick. All right, I'm still going down. Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
You're good. Let's go ahead. I don't think, let's see how I'll approach this. I don't think we're in a position, fellow members, that we can actually approve a budget today. We don't have one of the items that we need, which is... We don't have one of the items that we need, which is for, for security. We don't have those figures down at that factor yet, so I think there's some other things that may come into play. So I would suggest that we talk about it and give everybody kind of an idea of what we think going ahead and then we'll actually approve this after we have a chance to be on our, at our April meeting. I will tell you, let me give you the list again, if this makes any sense, that we'll talk about. And I will tell you where I'm headed and then we'll talk about that a little bit. As presented, our budget was eight million, eight hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars and fourteen cents. Then we have a variation of several different ways that we could go. And Angie and I have centered crunching numbers, Angie, so punch me when I get off, if I'm not right. If we only add in approximately, and we'll finalize this, around $250,000, which we think would be for the security, then that would get us up to nine million sixty-seven dollars and nine million sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, correct? Just with the two fifty. If we do not put in any security measures additionally and just look at trying to maintain our fund balance and increase the final budget amount from the eight, eight million, eight hundred seventeen thousand and add to $685,000, that would give us a total request of nine million five hundred, two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Final third option would be to ask also to combine all of that, where we ask for $250,000 for additional security measures, the $685,000 for our fund balance. That would give us a total request and then of nine million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
So that last one is with approximately $250,000.
That's with $250,000, not probably, $250,000. And then maintain our fund balance at its current level and include the $685,080 to maintain our fund balance. And we talked about the fund balance a little bit more. Even the figures we're using are misleading. Because again, remember, those months we're talking about, some of that is attached. Correct, Dr. Ball, you know, pre-K or pre-K and VIP and Medicare? I mean, a lot of that, we, I'd say, a lot of that's, I mean, how much are we talking to Angie? Approximately three hundred?
Up to three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand, that is attached. So if we're, if we wind up the year at eight hundred, three hundred, we don't have that familiar dollars. And you know how fast that could go just by looking at what it is. Because again, we're guessing when we're doing this. So I think y'all know where I'm headed, where I'm, where my thoughts are going, so.
And just to, just to emphasize, Mr. Chairman, that $685,000 would be to maintain our current level of service.
It's not an increase. So again, we'll think about it, but I know what I'm going to recommend to y'all is that we, our final budget amount would be nine million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
It's less than ten million.
Yep. Because we need to maintain the fund balance. The two fifty of security, I think it's been, I think we all realize what we need to do on that and go from there, okay? But again, we'll, maybe some little tweaks on that and we'll talk again, we'll have it again on our April board meeting where we'll make final approvals on the budget.
So that two fifty, if you're possibly, whatever that is for security, possible amount, that would go towards shoring up Franklin High School.
No, that's just the personnel costs.
That's the personnel costs.
Counselors and assistant residents. We're about to talk, we're going to talk about our capital lay, but we're not going to be able to do the capital lay either because we don't have the figures on the physical changes that we might need, which we're not going to go into great detail about those. I don't think, Dr. Ball, should we?
Um, it depends on how much the media is willing to.
Right, or we can't.
Publish about what we discuss.
Do you feel that?
The, the, so we're pushing at least the first part from personnel is helping us with the, the cause. Not treating it, what could happen, but we're starting at the beginning by having more counselors and things to work with children that the cause, we're getting at the root. Correct, perhaps, by attachment to.
No, no, plus it'll also expand our, just our counselor base for the other, some of the other things we've talked about today.
You know.
But we're at least they have time to talk about the kids' problems right now.
You know, one of the things that Mike Anderson pointed out that stuck with me last week was that, that school shooting in Parkland, Florida. And this is something that they seem consistent with all of these school shootings, is that they don't last very long. That, that school shooting in Florida lasted less than two and a half minutes, or right at two and a half minutes.
Ten people.
Seventeen people in two and a half minutes, you know? And so let's say that you have, which Parkland, Florida had SROs. They had security down there. There, there was a deterrent there, but when you're dealing with mental health issues and someone who has mental health issues, they only need two and a half minutes. If we can address those mental health issues in kindergarten, first, second, third grade, maybe avoid a shooting like that. I know that they, I know that they used these measures down there in Parkland and it didn't work, but can we take that chance here?
Let me ask you something along those same lines, Dr. Ball. What do we have, you've been a principal. What do we have in place in our situation where we have a lot of move-in students? What do we require? I mean, I know the shot stuff and all those medical things, but what about like a background check? Or what comes to where maybe, if there's a problem, because a lot of times there is a problem, that's why they come here. What do we have in place to identify that with a move-in?
Well, what we rely on is information from that other school system.
Right, but do we have a requirement to get a certain amount of information in their permanent records?
We can request their behavior records, their discipline records. And if they have, if they're under suspension, which they most likely would be if they've been charged with felony or something like that, we can use that information. And if they're under suspension, we don't have to accept.
Well, could we, could we go, go back to what you were saying about trying to catch the problem from kindergarten and, you know, at an early time, rather than wait till, you know, rather than just see, okay, is this child under suspension? Can we in Macon County make it a thing that we will require from a transfer student, a behavioral, a behavior?
Behavioral?
Yeah, behavioral, a behavioral record.
We, we request their student records. We do that.
But that includes. But can we be specific about it rather than just.
I'll talk to John and we'll, we'll do what we can out of that.
Because if we could, that would go right along with, you know, what you're saying, identified, you know.
I'll, I'll talk to John to make sure that we're doing all that we can legally.
Do.
Why?
Most of the information is going to be in Howard School.
If they're in North Carolina, North Carolina.
I'd say there's probably some limitations. I would guess legal limitations about what county.
I'll just make sure that we're doing the maximum.
Yeah, if we can try to push the envelope to the maximum, who knows if that might.
Great point.
I guess I agree. Say this.
Totally agree.
If I could say one thing, having experienced this, what you run into at the time element, when that child comes to enroll in your school and you're trying to make a behavioral contract, you don't know what they're, they don't want the child back. They don't want them to come back to the real parents. They want them to stay with Granny. So what, so your information can be distorted. But if you're waiting for exact information, how many times have they been suspended, stuff like that, that should be there. But you have to be real careful that other school does not respond to you as well. That child can sit there for thirty days, I'm going to say twenty. They've just failed that school, I'm assuming. That's what you run into. So when you got the grandparents sitting in front of them with the child, we're going to start over again. They had a bad situation where they'd be in the parents. And we are nurturers. We're, we're, that's what we are. That's what teachers do. And you give that child that chance to come in and start over again. And if you looked at the past record, it could, it could, it could, it could be tough making that decision there. But we're nurturers and we will make that decision probably in favor of the child and hope that we're making the right decision because they're trying to support the grandparents too. They don't need that child lose for twenty days. They need in some kind of environment, positive environment, educational environment to move forward. But if you take them out for twenty days, it, it all just gets real blurry.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to use it as a barrier of keeping them in because of what they've done. It's just a matter of information so we know if they need help when they get there, you know?
And I, I think you're, I think you're right in what you're saying.
Legally, what can we do?
I believe Franklin, I'm going to just listen to a wife talk last night. She said, you shoot it yesterday. And first thing I asked her, I said, did you check the key record? Did you check anything out? No. It was an assumption that that was going to be checked out before that child ever came to your classroom. But that teacher had a lack of information pertaining to that child. And, and so there's got to be a more effort there. But if they're trying to collect some information from the previous school, what you're, what are you going to do to that child?
The thing is, if teachers have got to do all this extra stuff, when are they going to teach? That's what bothers me.
I heard somebody say seventy, seventy percent or eighty percent of, of monitoring and missing now twenty percent academic. Did I hear that? I heard somebody say that.
If we try to make teachers, guidance counselors and everything else in the world, they're not going to be able to. They're stressed right now trying to get through the test at the end of the year.
How, how is the, how is the thing? Because I've, I've not been involved this part of it. The doctor's going to transfer from school A in one state or one county to school B. Is that electronic transfer now or is the parent for the kid, they got, do they have to go to the school? Okay, I'm moving to Franklin, North Carolina, do I have to pick up my records and take them with me?
I have it. I believe when I left Franklin High School, there's, there's a state record. You can look up, in North Carolina, I could look up Mary Doe or John Doe and then they would give you some information, right? Is that still?
If they were in Howard School, then that information's already there.
Right, it's a matter of state.
Other school releases the information of the cross information.
Yeah, basically what happens is a student goes to Franklin High School and says, we'd like to transfer here. Then our school will send a request to their school requesting those records be transferred.
But that's where we could request a behavioral.
Should be in the rathers.
Without a delay, that's when, you know, like you're talking about, without a delay. And when the kid's coming to the school, but we need to know if he needs help.
I think what I should have said though, we can request it from another state, but they, they don't have to immediately respond. They have a certain timeframe, which they, it could be up to twenty days before we got those records from.
And if that, if that school, like Mr. Schill's pointed out, that school doesn't want that child back, they may drag their feet, they're going to take it down, listen to the records because they want to go ahead and get enrolled up here and get them replaced.
Well, we got to try though.
Oh, yeah.
We'll do it. We have to try to have knowledge exactly in coming to school.
And I, I think, I think when you, when that child comes in, you collect as much knowledge as you possibly can. But I think when the breakdown comes, that you, as a principal, I may have the knowledge. But I, did I relate to Mr. Yolksman? Did I relate to the other five teachers or four teachers this child from that? No. And that's not right. You're, you're, you're setting that teacher up.
And that's not that big a burden on the principal. We don't get, after the first week of school, we don't get that many kids coming in. And usually they're coming by the school and, and, and registering during the summer anyway. So it's not that big a rush to cause that big of hardship on principal, let the faculty know.
And I, I think you're right. When they have multi-teachers, it gets more complicated than you do when you only have a single grade teacher. And, and I, I think that needs to be have an effort in there too.
But if you get ten, if you get ten kids transferred in, maybe only one or two will have a problem that you need to talk to the principal. But it's not like the principal has to go tell, you know, tell every teacher that there's going to be a problem. You know, if there's no problem.
Because you're really trying to get this child on a new bit, clean out that previous negative slate, let them start over again is what you're really trying to do. Because when they come, let's say, we always said we'd come from the middle school to the high school. We could care less what you've done in middle school. We want you to come here and start over. That's just a nurturing thing, that's what you're supposed to do.
Can we make a wish to come for everybody of that, please?
One other thing, I believe when you talk about social services, when you talk about education, I believe you're going to find out there's a lot of, those two careers are easily burnout out real quickly.
Oh, yeah.
There's not a lot of people going into them. And I've, I've got the feeling our university systems have lost their educational component to make teachers.
I know there was a thirty percent reduction in enrollment in teacher preparation programs in North Carolina a few years ago. I think it's ticked up a little bit, but, you know, we were in a shortage then, facing a shortage then. And what we'll be seeing in the next couple of years is there'll be a thirty percent reduction in the folks that are coming through the teacher program, that'll be graduating. That's a thirty percent reduction in the available teachers from our schools in North Carolina.
And, and I think the K-three or pre-K and K-three is going to be a real burnout area.
Yeah.
Because trying to maintain your, once you're talking about off-educational activities that you do every day.
And, and I think the, the increase in testing in pre-K three is going to have an impact. You know, traditionally, we've had a good pool of candidates for pre-K three. That's been one of the, the best pools, the deepest pools that we've had. I think that you're right, we're going to see a decrease in that, but you go above third grade and the pool is very shallow.
Yes, and to go back to what, what your needs are, I look at, like Coach Ghost says, look at a ball team. You've got offensive personnel and you've got defense personnel that you're trying to hire. To me, a teacher is an offense personnel. A SRO officer is a defense personnel. And when I go down through here and I'm looking and I'm listening to you, I'm trying to separate those two. When you say that we need to be able to help people, I'm going to say K-three, that's an offense situation. But, but also you have defense situation. You're talking about locked doors and camps and things like that. So it really is to be.
Proactive versus reactive.
That's right. And, but you, the reactive part is probably more long range. If you're handling offenses more.
You got, I understand it, Ben.
Yeah. Yeah, it's long range.
You're right.
Well, this budget then, we're talking about some long-range offense. And we get the figures for the other, it's defense.
Right.
One way to, lastly, if you could, go make copies of this, we're having fun of it, we're having fun of it. You can compare in the front, in the packets too. She'd give it to us now, we left mine at my house, so. Really?
I don't want you to feel this hard though. Dr. Ball's been insane with, I've been, no long doors. This community is working hard to assist and solve problems and trying in the same sense to allow teachers to teach. And this component, as me has been good about explaining, is really an important element within our community that we can help the teachers so they can teach and not be part of the. This community is working hard to assist and solve problems, uh, and trying in the same sense to allow teachers to teach, and, uh, this component, uh, that maybe has been good about explaining, is really important, uh, element within our community, that we can help the teachers so they can teach and not be part of the, uh, they won't help.
They'll sit down to finalize, is that what you wanna do? Yeah, Gary might wanna see one, yeah.
Is it current expense or capital?
Cap out lay. Then we'll do the, the finish, and then they'll send the, the actual finalized one out to the media for us, I think, okay?
And I, actually, this hasn't changed.
I just wanted to bring it up, everybody refresh their memories, uh, and look at it and see if there's anything we want to delete off, um, I can't remember, to be honest with you, Dr. Baldwin, I can't remember exactly where we was at for conversations.
We, we just went through this request, uh, these principal requests, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, we didn't take anything off of the principal requests, um, original requests, so if there's something that you'd like to remove from this list, I know that we've got those security measures that, um...
Need to be added on, too.
I'll, I'll pull those up so we can have a, a real brief discussion, I'm not asking the media not, but, not, uh, very, very general, we can discuss what our requests are, because we don't wanna give any ideas to potential threats out there about where our weaknesses lie.
I have a question, I mean, I know that everyone of these are needs, and most of them's been on there for years, so why can we not just submit this list to the commissioners, and when they come back and say, "We're gonna give you this amount," then we go through the list and decide what's, what's needed more and less? I, I, I mean, I feel like every single thing on here is almost a necessity, I, I've been on this board for six years, born on six years, and most of these things have been on this list for six years. So if they were bad six years ago, they're worse now, so my question is, is why can we not submit this to them? They, they, they're ultimately gonna decide how much they give us anyway, when they decide and come back and say, "Okay, we're giving you this much," then we meet again and, and call the list and decide what's the necessity, I mean, that's just a question.
I, I think that's exactly what will happen, we've been in discussion before, we bring this list, and they say, "Okay, appreciate this," and we look at this, now you take that back and, you know, narrow that, what you're talking about, and I think that's, historically, that's what we do, right?
Well, no, historically, um, historically, we have narrowed it down.
We, we have been cutting it down to what we think is, and trying to cut it down to where it's not...
To, to a map that we think we...
But these are not any, there is nothing on here that we need to cut out, cut down, or take off, I don't feel like, I mean, when I look at this, this is not frivolous stuff, this is just necessities, we're not asking, I don't feel like we're asking for anything frivolous on here that we don't actually need, so I think the commissioners need to see what we need, the whole list, don't take anything off, and let them decide, you know, for themselves, how much they're gonna give us, and then we meet again with what they give us, and then we do our prioritizing and what's the, in the worst shape and that we need to fix.
I don't see anything on here at all. Along with priorities, too, I'd like to point out that, um, you know, we have mentioned, um, some priorities at Macon Middle School, we're gonna have an architect look at that, county commissioners have agreed to, uh, have that, um, architect look at those, um, needs at Macon Middle School, make sure that we're not overlooking anything, or, um, also make sure, more importantly, that, once we get in there, start repairing some of these things, that we don't uncover other issues that will need to be addressed at that time, so we're gonna look, we're gonna begin that discussion on Friday.
I feel like to take anything off would be to say that, well, we really didn't need it, and I just don't think that there's anything on here that deserves to be took, took off, I mean, we've heard from the principals, the needs, and, and everything on here is a need, a necessity, almost, so, I mean, it's just my opinion that we don't remove anything off this list, we give them this list of what we need, and then let them decide how much they're gonna give us in that amount, of that amount.
Well, back to Mr. Shields' question, you know, this, this list, at this time, without the security measures that the principals have, have brought up, is about twelve million dollars, um, I think last year it was around, um, ten, maybe even close to what it is right now, and now we submitted a request of about three million, I believe it was, so we, we cut, we cut about eight or nine million out of that...
How much did they give you?
Uh, six hundred thousand.
I know, there's what I was gonna say. I'm sorry?
The total's wrong down at the bottom. You made that mine.
Okay. Max, uh, fifty-seven, C fifty-seven?
Yeah. I just want to make sure you get that in there, so that's what I...
So the twelve, four, four, six did not include the six eighteen?
Right.
Okay.
And I will just say that I was up there, uh, K-12 basketball at Nana Hala, that's where Nana Hala hosted the, um, Smokey Mountain tournament.
This year, the situation.
And there was a bit of a situation, and it's just an ongoing thing, like, so we just, I'm sure it's backed up, and we had about five hundred people there, and the toilets that were touched. I think that the toilets down the hall, and they actually had to open up the hall and let people, it was the bathrooms and the gym,nasium, and, and the dressing rooms were all backed up, so they had to shut them down and send everybody...
There were actually some people outside and around.
Yeah.
Me and Mr. Powell discussed that this morning, his thoughts was it, it may not be the treatment plan, it could be the, the pipe work that's never been replaced in there, too, I mean, I'm not sure what it was, but it was, it was pretty bad situation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll send out a correction, that correction.
Okay.
Email that to the board members there, will you?
Let me see if I can make, let me say this, I agree with you in a lot of it, however, I think we do have something that's redundant on here, the big figures, commissioners are engaged in discussions right now about the need of where we're, a need a new high school, or to go where our current track, so the figures we have of our fine arts center, auxiliary gym, and the drainage, I think those are redundant, I think that there, there's been discussion about those, so, if, you understand what I'm saying, I think those, they're aware of them, so I was thinking those adding on there is kind of redundant, because actually there's even more issues there. So I would say those, the, the, the fine arts center, auxiliary gym, and that, I don't see that that needs to be on our cap out lay, but our request now, because they're aware of it, I totally agree on everything else, it needs to be on there.
What about, um, all of the same lines at Macon Middle School, the issues at Macon Middle School that are on this request?
And that's what's in there, also have redundancy on that part of it, so, um, I would think...
We don't know what, we don't know what the actual cost's gonna be at this point, either.
No, we're gonna enter into that agreement Friday, and, so Macon Middle School, though, is...
But I think commissioners are also aware of that.
At that, as a separate issue, so we could remove those.
I think we do, I think we need to move those also, and then we'll actually be submitting two different things, it'll be our normal cap out laying in, a separate item with, for the Macon Middle School.
As long as, as far as the, the college repairs that's...
Totally agree, yes, I think also there, so.
Would you like me to run through those, the security, some of the security requests?
Uh, we have it, we have it in the packet. Does everybody, would everyone, if you'd like, for Dr. Baldwin to run through, just so we can look, he can run through a quick, and answer any questions on the, the suggestions by the principals on our school's security, I know there's some things, but I don't think we're possibly going to need to detail.
Yeah, we, we can consider doing this in closed session, that's...
Right.
We do have to approve the, um...
Emergency operations plans. My thoughts, Dr. Baldwin, are, let's get there, but I don't know whether we're gonna be discussing that out in open right now.
Some of these, uh, this, these first two pages, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, those are actually teacher...
Suggestions.
Suggestions, so some of those will be addressed through other means, right?
I'd say we'll have that, and then we can talk about it at our next board meeting, and determine what needs to be discussed and publicized versus what might not need to be vocal, vocalized, that makes sense.
I would just say that, um, we have listened to parent and teacher requests, um, and with Mr. Anderson's, um, suggestions last week, I think that a, a number of, of parent and teacher concerns will be addressed.
So, are we in agreement, we'll approve this at the next board meeting, we'll remove the big-ticket items for fine arts, auxiliary gym, and FHS, we'll remove those, because like I said, commissioner's there, and then we'll take out the Macon Middle School separately, but otherwise, we're gonna leave everything we have in here intact for approval, does that mean everybody's agreement? Thank you. All right, I don't think we need to go into great detail on this, Dr. Baldwin, I think we looked at it last time, so, at this point, I think you and Son, where we're at.
I do.
We'll have that, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget or cap out lay? Of course, we're talking about security, we have one of that, anything else, any questions, anything else on that, before we move on to the next part of the agenda? Okay, any other business, Dr. Baldwin, you said as needed, emergency operations plan, is that something we need to approve now, or what discussion we need to have about that?
It needs to be discussed, and any questions that the board has about emergency operations plan, and then approve that each year.
Okay, are we, do we have the plan?
Yes.
Have we, have something that we can view prior to approval, or where are we at with this?
Yeah.
Do that?
Close session.
Yeah, close session will come up, right, okay, all right, so at this time, all the board members see, we have, uh, five reasons to go into closed session, I'm not gonna do like Mr. Hennig does and read down, but obviously, if anyone can do that, the statutes and what before. So that motion moved in closed session, are you okay? Have a one second, any other discussion, all in favor, it's gonna say aye, aye, any opposed, salutes. And do we want to move over into the other?
Well, I don't think... Are you gonna need to have any announcements or anything?
No, I don't think it'll be coming anything out of it, to be honest with you.
Other than that, we can release this immediately.
Anything, and I'm not, I'm not aware of anything else that are coming out, so.